It's meeting has come to order. Today is Tuesday, August 9th, 2016. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Do you have any introductions?
No, I think we can move that along.
Okay. I want to welcome everybody for coming out today. We have one proclamation and I think things will go fairly quickly today so we can hopefully get you out here at a decent hour. Our invocation today will be given by Rabbi Jessica Rosenthal with Temple Barith Shalom and Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem.
Bless our local leaders with dedication and foresight, fortitude and imagination to solve complex and everyday issues of our agenda today. May they lead and help our communities to thrive. Source of shelter, grant safety and security to our communities so that truth and harmony will resound. Let the light of wisdom shine brightly in the halls of power and may it be a beacon of hope for all. And let us say, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Let the religions comply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, literate, virgin, and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Kam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman Schiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Okay, we have the deputy city manager sitting in today for the city manager. He had a family issue he had to take care of. Deputy, do we have any announcements?
Just that we have many people in the audience here for the E S G R proclamation. Many of our employees.
Okay. Great, thanks. Let's boot to the proclamation.
Proclamation A proclaiming August 21st through the 27th, 2016 as employer support of the Guard and Reserve Week.
And would Darren Vinters, please approach the bench here.
Darren. Larry Jacobs.
Today we are proclaiming August 21st through 27th, 2016 as employer support of the Guard and Reserve Week. Whereas National Guard and Reserve Forces comprise nearly half of our nation's military strength and are essential to America's national security. And whereas Reserve Component Forces stand ready to answer the call of service, whether serving alongside active duty counterparts all across the globe or responding to humanitarian crises at home and abroad. Whereas employers provide critical support to members of the National Guard and Reserve, allowing citizen warriors to serve wherever the nation calls, often foregoing financial gain and making sacrifices in the process. Whereas employer support is stronger than ever, more than 42 years after President Richard Nixon authorized the Secretary of Defense to establish the National Committee for Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve. And whereas our nation is in debt to the citizen warriors, departing the comforts of home to ensure our freedoms remain intact. Likewise, America pays special tribute to the commitment of dedicated and supportive employers who continue to make service in their Reserve Components possible. And now therefore, Harry Oberg, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona hereby proclaims August 21st through 27th, 2016 as national employer support of the Guard and Reserve Week.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, yes, on behalf of the Secretary of Defense, we want to thank you for your support of the members of the Guard and Reserve, which is quite amply demonstrated here by the folks in their audience. So it's, as the proclamation said, half, half of the members of the United States military today are in the Guard and Reserve and are citizen soldiers like we see sitting here today. Four years ago Colonel Palladini nominated the city for the Secretary of Defense Freedom of War and the city was amongst the top 30 in the nation to reach that. So congratulations again for the fine work that was done then and the work that you continue today. It's, it's folks like you that, that make this, this great nation what it is. And it's without the employer support, you know, we can pass laws every day of the week, but unless the public, folks like you, want to support and honor those, we wouldn't have what we have today. So thank you very much. The city has signed a statement of support in the past. So Mr. Mayor, here is a, is a new copy and if you'd like to fix your signature on that, you can, we'll do that as a reaffirmation of the support for the Guard and Reserve. But thank you. Larry?
I just, since you have such a good showing here, could I have the service members from the city come forward, please? We have a quick little photo op with the council and the mayor and bring our, your members of your city that participate in the Guard and Reserve. We certainly appreciate that, too.
While I'm here, I'd be remiss if I didn't also introduce Larry Gray as one of our E S G R volunteer members in Prescott.
Get up here, Larry.
Okay, we'll move on to item one.
Item one, consent agenda. A is the approval of minutes for the July 26 council meetings. B, adoption of resolution number 4350-1559, accepting a rural economic development enhancement grant from Arizona Commerce Authority. Item C is approval of payment to vertical communications for annual Mitel telephone system support and maintenance. Item D is the approval of contract number 2017-015 with Michael Taylor Architects to perform design services for the replacement of the HVAC system, or the HVAC system in FAA Tech Operations Division's leased facility located at Prescott Municipal Airport. And item E is the approval of payment to the Arizona Department of Revenue for Administration and Collective Services. Item F is the adoption of ordinance number 4992-1530, ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title 15, Chapter 15-1, Section 15-1-17, ejection from a city park of the Prescott City Code by adding a new paragraph to E.
Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve consent items 1A through 1F.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Passed unanimously.
Item two?
Item two is the liquor license consent agenda. There are eight items on the consent agenda today, eight special event liquor licenses. Prescott Meals on Wheels, National MS Society Arizona Chapter, Prescott Vet Sec Teritable Foundation, Arizona Owners, Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, United Way of Yavapai County, Sister City Association of Prescott, Central Arizona Land Trust and St. Luke's Episcopal Church. All eight of these applications have been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval.
Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to forward special event liquor license applications 2A through 2G to the Arizona State Liquor Department.
Oh, actually it'd be H.
We're missing one.
Oh, H. I was reading what the state.
Second. Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Passed unanimously.
We'll move on to regular agenda.
Item 3A, public hearing in consideration of a person-to-person transfer liquor license application for a Series 7 beer and wine bar liquor license from Randy D. Nations, applicant for Prescott Athletic Club LLC located at 1 Kingswood Drive. This is a request for a person-to-person transfer of a Series 7 beer and wine bar liquor license. The police department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with state law. The Community Development Department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with zoning requirements and building safety issues. The application and license fees have been paid and the application has been posted at the proposed location for the required 20 days. No public, no public comments have been received and I believe Kevin Blanchard is here, is in attendance, if we have questions.
Come on down. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
How y'all doing?
Good.
Tell us a little bit about your business.
We actually are in process of purchasing the racket club and the entire facilities, a five acre property. And my wife and I are currently running the cafe there and we're trying to purchase a liquor license to get that kind of piece of it going. We have a closing date of September, end of September for the entire facility and our plan is to revitalize the place, invest a lot of resources into it and turn it back into a nice facility for the, for the city.
Okay, when do you think it'd be open?
Well, it's open currently. There's 300 plus members and so we're not going to close it. We're just going to be, our remodel stages will make sure that the property will stay open. Our cafe is currently open. We've been, we took over the cafe on June 1st and we'll continue just to operate and, you know, repair and fix and market and make this place what it should be and what it used to be.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Good luck.
Thank you. That's a very nice property. You guys should come out and check it out.
Thank you for investing in Prescott.
We love it here. We've been here for five years, two, two kids and it's a great town.
Is the restaurant or the, is that open to the public?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's open nine to five daily and then we have happy hour on Thursdays where we have live music and it's open until about eight o'clock or nine o'clock at night on those nights. And we're going to expand hours and public's welcome to come down anytime.
We'll be there Thursday.
Come on down. Got live music, got some nice jazz, so it's good times.
So I understand you're considering some pickleball courts.
Yes, we are. The back, two courts. We're going to either do, we're either going to fit three per tennis court. There's two courts in the back, so they'll either be a total of six or eight, depending on how we're going to lay it out.
Great move. Thank you.
Yeah, we're excited.
Oh, great. Well, good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to close public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion, second vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
You have second motion?
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license application number 07130036 for a Series 7 beer and wine bar liquor license for Prescott Athletic Club located at 1 Kingswood Drive.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Passed unanimously.
Next item.
Item 3B, public hearing and approval of rezoning RZ-16-001, 780 Gale Gardner Way from single-family 9 to multifamily medium. Approval of site plan SI-16-004 and water service agreement WSA number 16-010, city contract number 2017-010. Property owner is Level Vision LLC, Tom Deveraux. Site APN is 111-11-080. Lot area is 21,780 square feet, .5 acres.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As you said, this is a application for a site plan, a rezoning and a water service agreement for a small seven unit development, multifamily development. But first, the rezoning from single-family 9 to multifamily medium in order to allow the development to proceed, the site plan and the water service agreement. The site plan will be for seven individual units rather than one singular apartment building to have more of a house type feel in a multifamily development. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the site plan at their meeting on July 14th. The Water Issues Committee recommended approval of the water allocation for, on their meeting at July 5th. And staff would be supportive of a motion to approve as well.
Any comments from the council? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Move to approve rezoning RZ-16-001.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve site plan S-116-004.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Passed unanimously.
Mayor, I move to approve water agreement number WSA-16-010.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Passed unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much.
Next item.
Item C, award of city contract number 2017-080 for the Prescott Boys and Girls Club outdoor basketball court at 335 East Aubrey Street to Bees Contractors LLC in the amount of $41,950. Property owner is the City of Prescott Community Development Block Grant, 100%.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Prescott Boys and Girls Club was awarded $32,000 plus last year in CDBG funds to build a basketball court. We had a bid process and three bids were received on July 7th. The breakdown's in your packet. The Boys and Girls Club needs another $9,318 to cover the contract and the CDBG Citizens' Advisory Committee got together and proposed moving those funds from another 2015 CDBG project that was canceled to cover this contract in its entirety. Council's being asked today to approve moving those funds and to approve the contract with these contractors to build the basketball court and you should have all the backup information in your packet. Did you want to add anything?
I've got some questions.
Any, looks like we got Councilwoman Lozelle.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reaffirm what, you know, I'm the liaison to this, this committee and they did some due diligence and, and I, so you don't use a lot of acronyms in case the people at home or in the audience. CDGB is Community Block, Community Development Block Grant money.
Thank you.
And these monies are not coming from Prescott. They are given to Prescott to, with certain criteria to spread out through the community. So I just want to make that clear and I fully support this, this move of funds.
And in federal dollars, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Councilwoman Orr?
Yes, I'm excited because we've been working with the Boys and Girls Club on teaching pickleball and it's kind of hard to do inside that building because there's a low ceiling. So we're very excited about these courts because these courts will have a dual purpose, be basketball and they'll also be striped, hopefully. Everybody's in agreement and I think a lot of people are saying yes to this, but they'll be striped so we can continue, the kids can play pickleball as well as, as basketball.
Great.
Multi-purpose.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Okay, thank you. I'll go to the public now. Any public comment? Come on down.
Mayor, Council, my name is Gerald Choost. I'm the executive director of the Boys and Girls Clubs in Central Arizona. So we do thank you and like Councilwoman Orr said, they will be serving dual, triple, quadruple purposes for the Boys and Girls Club. It's just not about basketball. We needed a space for the kids to actually have a safe space to play outdoors because we try to give the kids at least an hour of play outside. And what we have right now, we've just, the staff's been really, you know, creative in the way we do that outside with the space that we have. So we are really looking forward to continuing this, especially Jerry Northwood from the Pickleball Association comes out on Wednesdays and works with our older kids right now to teach pickleball. So there's just some of the things that we're going to be doing with that court at the Boys and Girls Club. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gerald.
Anyone else on the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to reallocate $9,318 from the Coalition for Compassion and Justice Open Door Kitchen Project to the Prescott Boys and Girls Club Project to increase the funding to $41,950.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Next item.
Item 3D, approval of fiscal year 2017 transient occupancy bed tax allocations.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is the proposed transient occupancy, better known as the bed tax allocations for fiscal year 2017. For fiscal year 2017, there was a projected beginning balance of $313,222, an estimated $822,000 in transient occupancy tax plus interest and $70,000 in liquor license revenues. Proposed allocations include $70,000 for event grants, which includes $30,000 for the whiskey off-road, $290,000 for tourism marketing and $232,381 for tourism administrative costs. An additional $385,000 is proposed for the support of various nonprofit organizations including PAC for support of the arts, PDP, the rodeo and the three museums, courthouse lighting, recreational amenities and the promotion of athletic tournaments and several other items including open space management and some support for the parking garage are also included in this amount. Finally, there's an additional $297,841 remaining fund balance which has not been allocated and if not spent would roll over to FY 2018. With that, I will try to answer any questions you might have.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Well, thank you just answered my question, but I wanted to ask what appropriated use of fund balance means. It sounds very bureaucratic, so.
It's finance department terms, so.
Yeah.
Mayor and Council, if I may, the, the reason that we allocate those is because, as you'll recall, the bed tax is a separate fund from other funds within the city and so if we do not allocate those funds, if something comes up during the year, that would be a good use of those funds and we can't, can't expend those. We pass a budget that is a cap each year and so within each of those funds, there, there is the appropriated use of fund balance.
And, and a second question is, were there any other applicants who were denied funds?
For the event funding program?
Yeah.
Well, we received 10 applications. One was denied because they didn't meet the requirements and so nine were awarded.
Okay.
Councilwoman Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. First, Don, glad to see you back to work, Kevin. You've been back. And this is not directed to you, Don, it might even be Mark or Allison, but I remember during the budget talks, we were looking at possibly at least discussing this liquor license revenue source come to council and I see it on the budget for 1617 and we haven't even discussed whether we're going to keep that or not. And I don't, do we have an answer on that?
Yes, you're correct, Councilman. Council did discuss bringing it back. We're waiting when you guys would like to discuss that, to what you want to do with that.
Yeah, I just, I didn't, I don't think it'd be fair to, to Don's budget here if we decided to take it away or, you know, if we kept it, we kept it, but I don't know how that would affect this budget if we did discuss it in it and we decided to take it off the, off the budget.
Well, obviously it would reduce the amount of available funding as, as was, has been discussed, the appropriately and clearly named appropriation, appropriated use of fund balance could be reduced to compensate for any reduction in revenue. And, and years prior to this, that, the name did change this year. It used to be called the contingency, but what it actually is, it's just fund balance that is available that gives council the authority to spend that during the year if they find projects that they want to move.
So if I understand, Mark, if we pass this budget today and then in two months we decided to, to remove that liquor license revenue fee, then we could take it out of that line?
Right. There would not, that would not be available to spend at the $297,000 level, it'd be $227, if you removed it totally.
Yeah, I don't want, I, I was prepared to hold, hold my vote no on this today, but as long as I know that that's there, I wouldn't want to hold up a lot of these other great projects in here. Thank you.
Councilwoman Blair?
A couple of things. I, I suppose, number one, I think if I'm not mistaken, the whole bed tax thing is to generate tourism and parks and recreation endeavors. Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilman.
What does Hope Fest do to bring in tourism or parks and recreation?
They submitted an application. It was reviewed by the TAC. Those were questions that were, that were asked by the committee. Nine members of the committee, it wasn't necessarily unanimous. Some voted on the low side and some voted on the higher side, but we take an average of what the TAC members recommend and that's, that's what they came up with.
Well, I'm not here to micromanage what they do. It's a small amount for $2,200, but however, it defeats the purpose if it's used, supposed to be used for parks and recreation and, and tourism, as far as I'm concerned. Then I have a concern about the tourism office salaries going from $142,400 going up by almost $90,000 in this next budget year, as well as PDP contract going up $24,000 in this next budget year. So I'd like some explanation on those two.
Certainly. As far as tourism office amount goes for salaries and administrative, we used to have the tourism manager salary in marketing. That was moved out. Didn't make any sense to have a line item for salaries and administration if one of the salaries wasn't in that line item. So we moved it out. As far as the PDP goes, we discussed, I believe, several months ago about, the PDP was taking over the responsibility for managing the summer concert series and that additional amount of $24,000 covers their expenses for putting on that event, which the city discontinued.
Could you explain to me again that first statement about the salaries and administration? Did you add a new employee in there?
We did not. We moved that employee salary out of marketing and into salaries and administration.
If I may, the, I think the bottom line here is the salaries have not increased, the number of employees have not increased. The increase you see in the tourism, tourism office salaries and administration is the cost that it was last year. What's really increased here is the capacity to do additional tourism, marketing, destination marketing, bring more folks into the community, to, to turn that bed tax dollar over and also turn that, those stays into sales tax dollars that go to the general fund and streets fund.
The point I'm trying to get is there's almost $90,000. Was that an employee salary that was somewhere else in the budget that's been moved into this one?
Yes, it used to be in the tourism marketing line item just above that. And so now that $290,000 of tourism and marketing dollars that's for advertising the city to tourists and visitors is entirely dedicated to that advertising component rather than to a portion of salary. So what we've done is essentially increase the overall capacity within this budget and the major increase there is within the capacity to do tourism, marketing and advertising to our destinations that we see a lot of draw from in the community.
I understand that the, the person was under the $290,000 under tourism last year. So that would have been 90, we would only have $200,000 for marketing. So we're getting $90,000 more in value, correct? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, $90,000 more in capacity to be able to increase the amount of advertising that we're doing outside of the city to bring visitation, tourism and, and highlight the community as a destination for visitorship.
That was under tourism marketing. So we're spending that whole 290 for that.
Correct.
But we're still increasing by $90,000 that job capacity.
No, we're just moving the cost of, we have two personnel.
and administration is the cost that it was last year. What's really increased here is the capacity to do additional tourism marketing, destination marketing, bring more folks into the community, to turn that bed tax dollar over, and also turn that, those stays into sales tax dollars that go to the general fund and streets fund.
Now, the point I'm trying to get is there's almost $90,000. Was that an employee salary that was somewhere else in the budget that's been moved into this one?
Yes, it used to be in the tourism marketing line item just above that. And so now that $290,000 of tourism and marketing dollars that's for advertising the city to tourists and visitors is entirely dedicated to that advertising component, rather than to a portion of salary. So what we've done is essentially increase the overall capacity within this budget, and the major increase there is within the capacity to do tourism marketing and advertising to our destinations that we see a lot of draw from in the community.
I understand that the person was under the $290,000 under tourism last year, so that would have been 90, we would only had $200,000 for marketing. So we're getting $90,000 more in value, correct? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, $90,000 more in capacity to be able to increase the amount of advertising that we're doing outside of the city to bring visitation, tourism, and highlight the community as a destination for visitorship.
That was under tourism marketing. So we're spending that whole $290 for that?
Correct.
But we're still increasing by $90,000 that job capacity.
No, we're just moving the cost of, we have two personnel. We retain two personnel. Those are budgeted entirely within salaries and administration at the same cost as in prior years, and we are maintaining that $290,000 of capacity for advertising and marketing, which is an increase from what was available in prior years because that was going to salaries.
Okay, I guess I'm just thick.
I think what they're doing, Steve, is just taking money out of one pocket and putting it in the other.
Well, I get that, but I, this job position of $90,000 was under marketing.
Right.
So therefore, we only spent $200,000 last year in marketing.
Right.
Well, now we're moving this person down, and we're putting them under the salaries. But the salaries last year were 142. So we're getting $290 on that top line, okay? And we've got $89,000, $90,000 in an increase in the tourism office and salaries.
Where the increase is really happening is in that tourism marketing, because that used to be going for a salary. Now all of that is available for actual advertising of the city. For example, if there was a campaign that made sense to do in Sunset or Magazine, and that was going to cost $20,000, there's the capacity within that tourism marketing budget for that advertising line item now that would not otherwise have been there, because that would have been spent on a salary.
I'd love to have a $90,000 salary job like that.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you. I thought at one time we talked about seed money for such special events like the bicycle ride. It was to help them get on their feet, get them set up and get them going, to where they got their infrastructure in place, and they would work towards getting their sponsorships and becoming self-sufficient. Same thing with some of the promoting at the rodeo. Back even when Mary Ann was on the council, we talked about this being temporary funding. It almost seems like year after year, this stuff starts becoming entitlement. And now they're asking for certain kinds of increases, not just what they got last year, but a little increase here and a little increase there. At what point do we start weaning off some of the special events that were intended to be self-sufficient, self-funding, self-perpetuating, et cetera, from city tax dollars?
Councilman Lamerson and Mayor and Council, I think that's two parts to your question. I think there's one part that we, as the tourism office and the tourism advisory committee look at, and those are the event grant applications. And exactly your comments, as Councilwoman Orr can attest, having been to some of our meetings, those are some of the conversations and some of the questions that have been asked. With regard to the other items, I really can't speak to those. Those other items below that, the tourism marketing and tourism office, those are items that predate me, and I really don't have any input into those.
I guess, okay, Don. I mean, I'll listen to you, but, you know, I've been here a long time, and almost as though, you know, we go over some of the same ground, maybe while not every year, but every two or three years it crops up. And at some point, some of these things should be self-sustaining and not solely dependent on tax dollars coming out of the city, and then increases on top of it, when indeed, some of them were initiated as a good idea, and we took leaps of faith, and year after year, we continued the leaps. Well, pretty soon, the strain on the leaps becomes, because there's other events that are also, we're trying to perpetuate and start other events, too. It's not just continuing to fund the same old events, but to allow room for more events to develop. And if the same dollars that we have committed, we keep committing and keep committing and keep committing, all of a sudden, you've got the same product, because year after year after year, they come back for more money. But we haven't expanded the tax base. We just continued the tax base. So I'm just sharing that thought process with you.
I understand. Thank you for your input.
Councilman Sheska?
Yes, are we getting a return on investment for the dollars we're sticking into these various projects?
Are we, Councilman Sheska, are you specifically referring to the amount that we spend on events, or are you?
Well, I'm talking about Councilman Lamerson's comments. You know, I don't mind spending money and putting it back in the same place if we are continually getting an improved return on investment.
Every one of the applications that we receive, if it's a continuing applicant, if it's a continuing event, they have to give us a report of what kind of revenue they generated, what, you know, what the ROI, if you will, was on their event the prior year. And so we look for growth of the event. We look for greater usage of hotel rooms. You know, in some cases, like the Whiskey Offroad, I mean, that event started 12 years ago with 200 participants. Now we're up to 2,000, and other components have been added. So gradually, that amount has gone up. But I think that in every single case, if they haven't been able to prove additional ROI, then that is something that the tax certainly took into consideration.
Okay. And do we typically carry 200-plus thousand in carryover?
Councilman Sheska, Mayor and Council, that amount has carried over, over a period of years. Obviously, we didn't start off with that six years ago. We started the tourism program. But that amount has accumulated over the past six fiscal years, and that's how we are, where we are today.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Orr?
Mr. Mayor, I've had the opportunity to serve on the Tourism Advisory Committee and have seen the process that this committee, this board goes through, and the many activities that they do, and the benefit to the city. I've also had the opportunity, in addition with Councilman Lizell, to attend the PDP, the Prescott Downtown Partnership, and see what a jewel of a group they are and what they bring to our city. During the budgeting process last spring, someone asked the question about, pretty similar to Steve, the kind of what your question was, so what's the return on investment? And so I asked if we could get some figures on that. And so I would like, if I may, we were all given, it's quite a while back, May 31, says the office is funded from the 3% bed tax, as we all know, collected by hotels and motels and other lodging establishments within the city of Prescott. I think this is really important. The tourism office can directly track $1.7 million in revenue generated, which is a return of investment of three to one. And if you actually look at some of the other research that's been done, there's a return of investment of seven to eight dollars for each dollar invested in tourism promotion. So it is, it is, to me, this is probably one of the best, this is a revenue producer for us. And that's not the only reason we do it, because it brings so many other wonderful things to our city. But it's certainly, for the return on investment for this office of tourism, I think is, I would like to applaud them for the work that they do. So, thank you. And also to the TAC. I know many of them are here today, so thank you for being here.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you. And not to diminish anybody for trying to help the city of Prescott. However, I would like to return to the ROI of the Acker Theater and how much city money goes into Acker Theater. Let's measure our ROI on Acker Theater, and look what the public does when the public chooses to do it. I'm just sharing with you, sometimes, you know, you start things, you get them going, and you hope that they get going and they can stand on their own, and move on to the next thing. And, you know, you only have so much revenue, and when the revenue is pretty well the way it is, and I realize we raised bed tax dollars, you know, we increased from 2% to 3% here not too long ago. I mean, I guess we could raise it another cent or two. There's people that would like to take it to 4% and 5%. I'm not one of them. But my point still remains, at one time, the motivation in using some of the dollars we had coming into the city, whether it be out of the general fund or out of the bed tax funds, or the various different asunderly of things that we do, was to get things started, and then back off and let them excel. And I would refer everybody back to Acker Theater, and what a good event that is. And now, it's so good on what it does. We're talking about maybe going to two nights a week instead of one. So I'm just sharing with you that, you know, and it's the same thing with year after year after year, you know, we haven't seen decrease in this out of the other thing. That's my only point for bringing that up.
Sure. Good point. Councilman Blair?
Just a quick question. I didn't get all of them done, but the last one, and maybe it's for Joe Baines in answering this question when it comes to, or Allison, when it comes to special events over time. I thought we were charging the special event folks that are in this community, including Whiskey Offroad, where they paid for security. And if that's not the case, or if it is the case, why would we be paying $25,000 with overtime?
Mayor, Councilman Blair, they are, each event is charged directly for their, all of the costs that is required to achieve the event permit and put their event on. However, there are some events, for example, Fourth of July week is a very, well, rodeo week. Fourth of July all falls at the same time. There is, there are some capacity issues with the city being able to manage all of those events and utilizing, for example, off-duty police officers is almost impossible during that week of the year. So there is a minor amount that's transferred. We also occasionally do have the special events boss, that new process that we've been doing with major special events to make sure that what is in the event permit is actually being carried out in the operation of the event. And if there's tweaks that need to be made for a future event, then that event boss brings those forward through to that next year's event permit process. So it's a minor amount relative to the total cost of what those events cost to put on for the producer.
Thank you for the explanation.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
I'm glad you brought up the Fourth of July. It seems to me that that event, when it was put together by the city and held at Pioneer Park, was a much more successful event, much more family-oriented event. We still have some problems to work out with the traffic flow there, as well as downtown. But I have received so many comments from people who say they really wished we could move it back to Pioneer Park, and are we going to reconsider, rethinking the Fourth of July celebration next year? Couldn't we fund the Fourth of July event out of the bed tax?
Mayor, Councilwoman Wilcox, about four years ago, that event was funded out of the bed tax. I will point out that although sometimes described as being a net zero cost to the city, the cost of all of the employees required to put that event on and the overtime required for that was in excess of about $60,000 to $80,000 each year out of the general fund. Part of that discussion that happened during the mid-year budget adjustments in November of 2015 was that there is that significant cost. In addition to that, oftentimes, we have folks coming in, not just, they're not just coming in on overtime, they're coming in on holiday pay, which is not time and a half. It is two times the amount, and it takes them away from their families during a time of year when we also have folks that need to work the rodeo, need to work the other Fourth of July-related events. So there are some capacity issues. Is it something that the city could do? Yes. I would say that's equivalent to the cost of all of the other events that are in this tourism budget. And I think the question is, is the return equivalent to that? There's a question mark from a tourism perspective as to what the, you know, significant return for bed tax and sales tax is for that high a cost to the city. And that's something for the council to grapple with. But what we did last year was put that out for a request for proposals. It was put on in a different manner by the private sector. We will be going back out for a request for proposals for the 20, the forthcoming 2017 Fourth of July in the near future. And there is a question as to whether some or all of that cost could come from the city. And that's really a question of priorities and cause and effect of expenditures, and then return on investment for tourism-related dollars.
Well, I think when we look at return on investment, we also have to look at what we're losing when we move an event like the Fourth of July from Pioneer Park to downtown. I think we're going to lose a lot more people if we keep it downtown. And as much as I love having activity downtown, it isn't a very family-oriented place after dark with the bars open. Lots of people really liked it at Pioneer Park, because during the day, they had all those fun things, and people could set up their tents and hang out all day and have a family picnic, like good old fashioned Fourth of July.
Councilman Blair?
Real quick, and it's an issue, because Gene brought it up, I'll coatill that real quick. Are we going to do the RFP, RFQ for Pioneer Park?
Mayor, Councilman Blair, what we did last year was leave the location open up to those who proposed. And you'll recall, last year, we were somewhat at the last minute relative to being able to put something together that was exactly the same. But we did not have anyone propose to utilize Pioneer Park in a way that did not have a fairly significant cost to the city of Prescott. So the question would be, when we put that out, if we want it to be at Pioneer Park, will they be able to put that on? How will it be done? And so that's what that RFP process is for. If it's the council's desire to put some city dollars into that, that is something that you could do, utilizing that appropriated use of fund balance. But again, if we took all of those suggestions from today, your appropriated use of fund balance is down to about half of what it is, and that will be gone next year, or two years from now. And so being able to sustain something like that, utilizing the bed tax, and still doing that destination marketing, that's a much broader draw to the community for visitorship, is a real question mark when, when you're putting, you know, once we create that expectation, I think that remains out there. And is that a sustainable expectation, along with all of the other broader destination marketing? And that's a policy question for the city council.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you. Again, not to be negative, this is a precursor, all right? We have another budget discussion coming up. This is precursor. So, you know, this, I appreciate all the work the TAC did. I appreciate this coming forward. There's still some questions out there regarding, as we go forward in next year's budget cycle, maybe we'll have some different answers as we move forward.
I've got a couple of comments and questions. My one comment is, I've had a fair amount of input from the public on the Fourth of July this year, and I have about, right now, 50% saying they liked the downtown, and 50% saying they should go back out to Pioneer Park. So, you know, it's probably something we'll have to look at again in the future. Couple of comments that I have. I see this open space management. I'm not sure what that's all about.
Mayor Oberg, that is a partnership that the city has with the, I'm going to miss it.
Joe to the rescue.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, that's just money that's appropriated out of bed tax to my department to take care of open space. Could be signage, could be trail maintenance, could be installing a culvert on a trail. It's one of the funding sources for the maintenance of the trail system, open space.
Okay. Prescott Creek's support?
Prescott Creek's, that's for the management of the Watson Woods riparian area. They've been managing that area for at least the last six years, I think.
And we think that's a major tourist attraction?
How it came to come out of tourism funds, I don't know. It's been that way for a number of years, but that's certainly something that could be discussed.
I'm just kind of interested. I see we have this museum marketing support. I would think all the museums, don't they charge to have folks come in and?
Mayor, yes, the museums do charge. They have a nominal entry fee. I think most of them are in the $5 per person range. That's obviously not enough to cover all of their expenses. But the reason that we have two line items for museum marketing support, specifically for the Fippen and the Smoke Eye, is that they requested additional marketing assistance from us. The museums are open seven days a week, and, you know, 12 months out of the year. So they, they're a draw every day of the year. And they felt that it was appropriate to be able to ask for funds that they could control themselves. Each one of those museums has a different, has a different demographic, different segment that they market to, and they came to city manager's office several years ago and asked for that, and it was ultimately approved.
So what you're telling me, then, is that they are normally covered under the tourism marketing, but they're asking for additional funding? Is that what you're telling me? Or are they totally separate from that?
No, the only, the only funding that they, the only funding that the Fippen and the Smoke Eye receive is at $15,000, and that has to be spent on marketing.
Okay. Well, I guess the other thing I've got a little bit of concern of, you know, it's interesting to see that we have some of the events here that have remained consistent in keeping their requirement of bed tax money constant. But I know that some of them are growing. It's my understanding in talking to Todd Sidow from Whiskey Offroad this last year, he indicated that he thought he was going to get more money from the city, and greater he indicated that he thought he was going to get more money from the city and greater than $30,000 we have here. And he said as a result, they ended up losing money. Now, you talked about having 200 people when they started, what, 13 years ago?
Right.
And now they're up to almost 2,000 riders?
Well, 2,000, 2,000 participants, but then there are a lot of people that come in specifically for other related events such as, you know, the concerts and et cetera.
Right. And so it seems to me, it's been around for a while, it's been pretty successful, it should be having a lot of sponsors. It's my understanding he's going to come back this year and ask for another $10,000 over the $30,000 he's got here. So I guess what I'm a little concerned about, I see a number of them that are increasing their, their requirement of bed tax money. And I guess the thing I'm trying to figure out is, you know, why are they growing in cost when they've been around for a while and they've been successful? They seem to have great support, we have a lot of folks coming in town. I'm not sure why we're having to give them more money. I'd rather see it stay either level at what they've had in previous years, or if they become very successful, actually start seeing their requirement against the bed tax funding to go down. Can you explain why that's, why this is happening?
Allison, did you want to jump in on that, or do you want me to take it?
Well, I thought it was going to be a question about the Whiskey Offroad, but it stopped being that question, so.
I think with regard to Whiskey Offroad, where you initially started your, your comments, there is a contract in place, and that contract basically ended several years ago. We've been extending it, there is a provision in the contract to extend year after year. We've talked about renegotiating it, and we started a renegotiation process a couple of years ago. And I don't think Todd liked the way it was, the direction it was headed at the time, and asked us to just continue with the process that we've, or with the contract that we currently have. So there's, there's that question. As far as the other events go, I think that, like I say, I've got my TAC members, several of them in attendance, and I think we'll, we'll be listening to all of your comments and certainly, you know, take that into consideration and probably come back before we start this process next year with some new, some new guidelines.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I could weigh in on this a little bit too. As an example, the Prescott Highland Games was, was a one-day event for a number of years, two years ago, three years ago. You know, because of our urging, we want them, all of these events, we want them to expand attendance numbers, whether that's by going to a multi-day or whether that's by spending that money, marketing their event better and bringing more people. So the Highland Games was a one-day event, now it's a two-day event, now they're looking at getting a national dance competition. And so we're looking at supporting some of these events so that we can help grow those events. And the TAC committee looks at that and looks at the potential for them to, to grow. And that's sort of why some get funded more than others, is that we see the, the opportunity for them to expand and grow and bring more people in.
Yeah. I understand the idea, seed money, I understand that there might be an increase if you're trying to grow a program, but at some point, I would hope that these programs mature to the point where they don't require bed tax money, or we could actually see a decrease in what they require from us. Is that clear?
Yes.
Am I making it myself understood on that? I'm not sure.
Yes, you are.
Okay. Explain to me again, this big increase in the PDP, I'm not quite sure I understand that.
Mayor, council members, during the mid-year budget reductions in November of 2015, one of the things that the city used to put on with an employee that, a position that the city no longer retains, is the Summer Concert Series, which is the, now a Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday event, Wednesday, Thursday, I'm getting it wrong, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday event on, in the downtown area. And that used to be more nights than that. And so when the city eliminated that position in order to maintain the Summer Concert Series, the PDP stepped up to accept management and putting on that, that show, which includes booking all of the bands, the sound systems that are required three nights a week to put that on from May through September. And so, so that is still going on, and instead of having that be a cost to the city of a position, a full-time position for the city as well as the contract for sound, as well as any costs related to the bands, we are getting that now through the PDP for that small increase to their contract of $24,000, which is a reduction of what the cost used to be to the city to put that on.
So right now, the Summer Concert Series, that's held entirely on the Plaza?
That's correct.
Why isn't the county putting some money into this, or are they?
County'd sort of like to kick it off.
They'd like to get rid of it?
Yeah, they're not a big fan of it.
Okay. All right, so what did you want to say about the PDP?
No, that's fine, I just wondered if there were questions to be.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Well, that's all I have. Any other questions, Councilman?
I do have a question of Kendall. Kendall, do you have an idea of how many people come to the Concert Series every evening?
I do.
Because you have someone there now that's?
Yeah, we have, we have a person on the ground at every event, all those events now. Taking a pretty good idea of a census. I will say the range is from 300 to some of them, maybe 600 or 700, depending on the day of the week and the weather and the act and like that. We do have, we have a, we'll be presenting a tally at the end of the season on how many people we think we had through. But it's, it's grown some, we've pushed, we've probably worked a little harder publicizing it than in the past.
That's great.
But it's, and you know, the nice part is, is something, it's mostly local.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's about, at least half the people there are, are from Prescott. And you see lots of folks you know, you know, and I think it's real, it's very important to the character of our downtown.
Yes. One of the other things that I see about the, the TAC, if you don't mind, Mayor, is they gather the data. They've asked all of the folks who are getting funds from, from this, from the bed tax to gather data. They want to know how many people are actually coming in, so that when they come back next year and they ask, and this year, they had information that they could provide to the committee to say, this is what we know, this is the impact that we know that we've made. And so I think that's good that we have somebody counting the heads on the, for the Summer Concert.
Councilwoman Sishka?
Thank you. The $30,000 that we put into Whiskey Offroad, what was that originally intended for?
Well, Mayor and Councilman Sishka, the original contract, which is essentially what we have today, the majority of that goes to, to match the purse, and so that, the purse is, is the, what the winners receive, and to make that into a draw, not just for local riders, but we have international pro riders that ride in that race that bring that, that draw for Prescott as a mountain bike destination year-round. And then other costs are related to, to the cost of putting that on. And I will point out that the $30,000 is not the end of what that contract requires of the city. Part of that, and in, probably in excess of what that $20,000 of special events overtime is also related to, that contract requires that the city supplies the, the employees and costs for closing the roads, for police presence, for EMS if we require it. So, so that is the hard dollars that we provide to the, the Whiskey Offroad through that contract, but that contract also requires that those support services are a cost to the city, and we put those on with city personnel.
Okay. Now, Allison, another thing, from that standpoint, I think that they, the last two years particularly, they have gotten on the short end of the stick as far as weather's concerned.
That is accurate.
And from the standpoint of, I noticed that, that he has increased things like concerts and things like that in this situation. And of course, the weather all factors into that, and so it doesn't surprise me that he says that he lost money in that situation. I guess the city of Prescott has to sit back and go, what could it be? What could the return on investment be if in fact, we had good weather? I'd like to hear from somebody in the lodging business as far as what all of that means to them, because return on investment truly is where we ought to be going. And if, if we determine that, you know, it's just not worth it, then, you know, we're going to have to go a different direction. But, you know, I certainly would like to hear from somebody from the lodging business about this.
Yes, and, and Councilmen, while we're, we're having Margot come up, one of the things we look at are the hotel nights, and we are very full already to capacity for the Whiskey Offroad time of year. And so putting more dollars into a time where we have no capacity to grow that bed tax significantly is a question mark.
That's pretty much exactly what I was going to say. We were down the last couple of years because of the weather, so our occupancies were down slightly. I mean, it's still a tremendously busy weekend, even though, you know, we were a little bit lower in occupancy, we weren't hitting 100% on those nights, we were, you know, in the 90% range. But to Allison's point, to grow that event anymore, the only way to grow it is to add another day or add another event at a different time of year. And I've talked to Todd about that a number of times, but to add more riders and more riders on the same weekend, we're just out of rooms. So there's no real way to do that. So looking at these numbers and adjusting the contract to put more money and to give him more money, probably at this point doesn't make a lot of sense unless we were to add another day or add another weekend in November or October or something like that.
But the reverse side of that, if he decides to go away?
Yeah, we don't want that.
What does that do to you?
Yeah, we want to keep our friendship and partnership with him, and we want to work really hard to have something mutual come out of this that, that is good for all of us.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from the council? Any from the public? Okay, do I have a motion?
Absolutely. Mayor, I move to approve the transient occupancy tax allocations for FY 2017.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second vote, please.
Mayor Oberg? Passes unanimously.
Next item.
Item 3E, approval of amendment number one to city contract number 2015-184A1 with AMC Foster Wheeler to authorize tasks four and five of Upper Granite Creek Watershed and Watson Lake TMDLs and stormwater quality monitoring plan in an amount not to exceed $378,782 water, wastewater, streets and aquifer protection fee.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, good afternoon, Council. Again, the next item for your consideration is an amendment to an existing city contract with AMIC Foster Wheeler for engineering and environmental support services, which is necessary for compliance with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. The original contract awarded in October 2015 authorized task one, two, and three of the overall TMDL project. The proposed amendment for your consideration today will add task four, which is the Watson Lake Reservoir Water Quality Monitoring Plan, and task five, which is the, which is the development of the Upper Granite Creek Watershed Model. Just really quickly, an update on task one and three, one through three. Task one was the outline of an action plan for the development of the lake management plan, has been completed. Task two was the review of the final Upper Granite Creek Watershed E. coli TMDL, has also been completed. And task three, which is to develop a stormwater quality monitoring plan, is on schedule and will be completed by the end of this year. Just really quickly, future amendments, we have three more tasks for the future amendments. Task six is to create a Watson Lake reservoir model. Task seven, develop a watershed pollution reduction plan. And task eight, which is our last task before we start implementing projects, is to develop a Watson Lake reservoir management plan. Tasks one through eight collectively will allow the city to comply with ADEQ requirements and create a model as a basis for a comprehensive, multi-year capital improvement program similar to the water and sewer capital programs. Tasks four and five will be completed within 14 months, and there's sufficient funding toward this contract, which is contained in the existing TMDL project budgets, water, wastewater, street funds, and the NEPTES Phase II implementation program. In addition, funding is also collected through the aquifer protection fee, which is also budgeted for use on this project. With that said, next, I'd like to introduce Matt Kaling. He is the city's new environmental specialist. Matt has a degree in biology from ASU, and for the last 15 years, Matt has been working in the natural resource management and environmental compliance. So he comes to us very well-prepared to take on those complex and challenging environmental issues. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here before you today. I'm here to provide a brief geographic kind of reference point for the stages that Dr. Latimer will be presenting in subsequent slides. So what we have here on the diagram and in your packets as well, are those areas that are directly impacted by this project. You'll notice the red threads at the southern or bottom half of your page reference the four impaired creeks, Granite, Manzanita, Butte, and Miller creeks. That is one portion of it. And then in kind of a staggered parallel tract is the monitoring plan for Watson Lake itself. The reason that it's done in this manner is so that those actions that take place in the upper reaches of the watershed will be able to both document and learn from them how we are going to proceed with the lake management plan that will follow. At this point in time, it's my pleasure to turn it over to Dr. Latimer. He's a senior project manager with AMIC Foster Wheeler.
Thank you, Matt.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My pleasure to complete the presentation here. If you, I hope you recall back in April when it was last in front of you presenting this, I used this graphic that you see now highlighting the five tasks that, that need to be completed to get to the point where we know exactly what, what measures need to be implemented to begin to work towards the reduction of the pollutants associated with the watershed as well as with the lake. Because the two surface water bodies are connected, they're hydraulically connected one to the other, it makes sense to stagger them the way you see them here so that the outflow from one becomes the input to the other, if you will, and that's necessary in order to get the full picture here. So what I'm prepared to talk about this afternoon in a little bit of detail, more so than I did back in April, is about this first step that we're taking specifically tasks four and five under the contract. As the city engineer told you a moment ago, tasks six and through eight, or six, seven, and eight, those are future tasks that will, will be taken care of after four and five are complete. So a little more detail, and, and the stars that you see there for each of the tracks, for each of the TMDLs are the products that will define for you exactly what needs to be done. So the point is, the city, neither the city nor any other regulatory agency in the state, they've done any sort of cost-benefit analysis or any modeling of any sort to really evaluate all the various options that may exist, that may be possible to implement here, maybe the synergies that exist between them as you move forward. The models that are being created for both the watershed and the lake are, you know, tools that will allow you to simulate different things, different improvements, different measures, combinations thereof, so you can end up with the most cost-effective measure to, to achieve the reductions that are required. So that's the overview in terms of, all right, in terms of what task four is all about, what we're doing there is we're developing a water quality data monitoring plan for the lake. So there consists of three main ta, or subtasks, if you will, or elements, work elements. One is to define the hydrodynamic water quality model that will be used. Now, why is that necessary? You need to know what the tool requires in terms of input to be able to then go out in the field and collect it, or figure out if there's existing data out there that can be leveraged or used. Next step is to the, is to develop the water quality monitoring plan. Basically, that's a plan that defines what needs to be collected, where is going to be collected, when is going to be collected, how is it going to be collected, what kind of analysis, lab analysis will be performed and whatnot. And then once the data is collected and analyzed, a quick run through the data itself to define the, and best describe the various physical, chemical, and biological relationships that exist in that data so that we know exactly how to proceed when it comes to the modeling. exist in that data so that we know exactly how to proceed when it comes to the modeling. Because we need to collect data for the entire year. You want to get a full cycle of the behavior of that lake. That's the reason why we're collecting for 12 months in this task. The period of performance for it would be in 14 months. But it's one that is critical in order to build the model for the lake. That would be the next task to this. In terms of, went too far, in terms of deliverable for this task, I mentioned already, the water quality monitoring plan that will define that. It's the data collection that goes with that, the implementation of that monitoring plan, and then a report that summarizes the results that we got from that. And then for subsequent actions, as mentioned already, task six, which would be done first, and then lastly, task eight. By the time you get again to task eight, you have a pretty good idea of exactly what needs to be done, what's going to cost, how long is this going to take, everything else. For task five, which is a parallel track type task, we're focusing on the watershed now, upper Granite Creek, and this is the development of the hydraulic model and the water quality model that combine will allow you to mimic the watershed and then be able to simulate or run different scenarios and make sure that you have a working tool, calibrate that as you do that, obviously. And this task will take less time, about nine months instead of the 14 for the other one. But again, also very critical in creating, developing a tool that will end up being a tool that the city will use for many years to come, nonproprietary, nothing here that the city can run thereafter for purposes of simulating measures in the watershed for not only the streams that are impaired, for any other streams in the watershed that may end up being impaired or classified impaired down the road if it happens to be that way.
Okay, we got one question from the mayor. Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Doctor, good to see you again.
Likewise.
Thank you for your help on this question. The model that we're building, pending the data input that we put in, because if you've been here for any amount of time, you understand what takes place in this body of water isn't the same this year as it was last year, as it was a year before, et cetera. So based on that data, will the model be equipped to give us relevant information, pending on the year, you know, things with rainfall, things with the various pollutants, et cetera, that have taken place over the last 12 months that would be different than what was 12 months before?
Very good question, and the answer is yes, absolutely. So the model will be built with a long period of hydrologic performance in the watershed, meaning many years of flows in the stream that are already measured by stations that exist in the watershed. Task number one, which the city engineer referenced at the very beginning of this presentation, is the development of the water quality monitoring plan of the discharges coming out of the city into the watershed. That effort will become an input to the creation of the watershed model. So again, being done in the right sequence here so that what gets collected there becomes an element to the tool which in the end can simulate performance. And then the output from the watershed model becomes the input to your lake model because, again, hydroically connected, what flows from the watershed goes straight into the watershed, into the reservoir, so therefore allows for that modeling. So the answer is yes. And then it gets calibrated. So once you build the watershed with the various hydrologic features in it and all that, then you use data collected over time to make sure that the watershed mimics what actually occurred in the watershed in the past. So that's how, it's called calibration of the model. That's how you know that you have a tool that's fairly representative. It's not going to be ever exact. You're dealing with natural forces here, but it's going to be a fairly predictive model, if you will, of the behavior of the watershed. And then that's what you use to simulate, in that case, various improvements that you achieve or you make or you propose to do to the watershed for water quality improvement.
Thank you, because from time to time, we have more burn and we have more slurry, and those times are not always the same and it's not consistent. So we should have a model that's sufficiently designed to project what, to make ADEQ happy, you know, sufficiently what's going to happen so that we can, you know, not be charged more than we're going to be charged, all right?
Of course, absolutely. And then the model that needs to be flexible enough that you can continue to build it over time because, obviously, you know, as the city expands and things happen in the watershed, you want to be able to capture those changes in the model as well so that it continues to be a fairly accurate predictive tool for you on that. This is fairly standard procedure in the industry, building these models. They are, you know, they're fairly accurate tools down the road for simulating, you know, improvements or impacts in the watershed. So that's what we'll be doing here, absolutely. Any other question before I continue?
I have a question about the timing of communicating with ADEQ on the acceptance of the model. You do that when you're all done and after presenting it to the council, or do you communicate with them along the way?
I will defer to the city to define that, but yeah, that's ADEQ, and maybe I should let...
I'd be happy to address that. We are in monthly communication with ADEQ, both through email and over the phone, and so that's what my role is, to make sure that we have ongoing dialogue so that any questions are nipped in the bud and that we're able to address them appropriately. And naturally, I would also convey those to Dr. Latimer as well as my colleagues to address them in a manner. But so far, they've been very appreciative of the fact that we're demonstrating progress on a continual basis, and that's what we hope to do with this, with this before you today.
Okay, thank you.
May I finish the presentation or address questions now? Okay. I only have two more slides, I believe, so I'm almost done. So in terms of deliverable for task five, you'll end up with a predictive tool again where you'll be able to simulate those four items that you see there in bullets, like improvements to the sewer lines that are ongoing within the watershed, any LID or, I'm sorry, low-impact development or green infrastructure-type practices that you implement in the watershed, as well as any of these regional water quality facilities that are being constructed right now within the watershed. So all those things will be captured in the model, and you'll be able to simulate the impacts that this will have over time. And then just a quick summary slide, again, to reiterate, the city is under regulatory requirement to implement, define first and then implement solutions to reduce the pollutant input to the two water bodies and the city as well in its way to doing that. The good thing is that the city's going to end up with some products here that will support further activities within the watershed and the lake and something that will provide ADEQ, the regulatory agency, with all of the answers that they're seeking here in terms of what you're doing and how fast is it going to take and, or how long will it take and how fast will you implement will provide all that information. And with that, I'll maybe address any other questions I haven't addressed yet.
Any comments from the council? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve amendment number one to city contract number 2015-184A1.
Second.
A motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Next item.
Item 3F, award of city contract number 2017-074 to Dibble Engineering for engineering services for the Chino Valley Water Tank Project in an amount not to exceed $383,099 water fund.
Mayor, Council, the next item for your consideration is a design contract with Dibble Engineering for engineering services necessary for providing a second 5 million gallon potable water tank at the Chino Valley Water Production Facility. Here's an exhibit right here. The water production facility is the city's primary source for water production, storage, and transmission. The project will entail the design and construction of a new 5 million gallon welded seal tank. The new tank will resemble the old tank there located, and the new tank will be located just to the east of the existing tank. Upgrading and engineering fill for the tank pad as well as piping to connect the tank to the existing system will be required. It's also anticipated that the existing CMU wall, which is, if I get my finger in the right spot, right there, to the east, will be expanded. That'll provide a visual as well as a sound buffer. Some landscape work will be done, and site security will be incorporated into the new tank design. Essentially, by completing this project, the city will increase water storage, provide operational redundancy, and allow for routine maintenance to be performed on the existing 5 million gallon tank. Dibble Engineering was picked from the pre-qualified on-call list for professional services. This saves staff time instead of having to go out to bid in weeks and a lot of staff time. We've created a pre-qualified list. Dibble was selected from that list. The scope of work was provided by the city to Dibble and which Dibble submitted a proposal which was reviewed and negotiated with Dibble. The proposed schedule is to complete the design within five months to notice proceed, and funding for this contract is available through the water fund. The total project cost, including construction, is estimated at 4.2 million, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Zell.
Thank you, Mayor. You already answered my one total cost. I do have a question you brought up when you said site security. Is that going to include, like, enclosing it to where whether contaminants, intentional or non-intentional, get into the water?
I do understand that there's going to be fencing and gates, but as far as...
Is there a way to us know that if somebody tampers with that water line, is there sensors and things like that?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilwoman Zell, good question. Greg.
Good afternoon, Councilmen. The project also will include intrusion alarms on different items, hatches, ladders, things like that, to go beyond on the security besides the fencing and such.
Thank you, that's right.
Any other questions, comments? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2017-074.
Second.
A motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Next item, please.
Item 3G, award of city contract number 2017-075 for the fiscal year 2017 pavement preservation and rehabilitation project to Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated in the amount of $4,089,333.80 Streets and Airport Fund.
Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Steve Oros, Public Works. This is an award of a construction contract to Asphalt Paving and Supply Inc. for our annual pavement preservation and rehabilitation program that's both involved city streets, alleys, and for the last several years, some work out at the airport. We have a list of the streets in your packets. There's several rehabilitation projects, which consists of basically milling off the surface because the substructure of the roadway is very sound. It's just the surface treatments need to be addressed to promote the life of the pavement. Then there's some preservation techniques, which are the seal coats, which is the surface coating to, basically, it's like hand lotion for your body. It prolongs the life of the skin, and in this case, the asphalt. And we're starting a more robust program in that area. You'll see some of the streets that we just reconstructed a couple of years ago, Whitesbar, Copper Basin, Mount Vernon Senator Highway, to start a more robust preservation program to minimize how much milling we have to do in the future and prolong reconstruction. Included in this project is some work out at the airport. We did meet with the airport, and they developed a list of three projects to make improvements at the airport. We did work with them and develop cost estimates, which initially exceeded their budget. So we developed a bid alternate to, an effort to meet their budgets, and that's what happened with the project, is that as we went through the procurement process, which had four bidders that are pre-bid, and then three bids came in the following week. We did get the base bid within the engineer's estimate and the, which included the two elements from the airport. The bid alternate did push it over the airport's budget, so we did make a recommendation to not award that at this point. John Cox from the airport is here to address that, and there may be some other news in that regard. But we have confirmed the bid with Asphalt Paving and Supply. The references checked out, and we're ready to move forward with the award of the project, which is a 90-day construction period with the award assuming today. The notice to proceed will be next week and to get on with the chip ceiling and other elements while the weather is good. The funding for the project comes from the street fund, a little over $4 million, with the balance coming from the airport fund. And John is here to address the airport projects, and then we can answer any questions you may have.
Mayor, members of council, John Cox. Thank you again, Public Works, for your partnership with this. The two highest priority projects that were really repairing some roads that the fuel trucks use and a lot of the service vehicles use at the airport came to a total of about $85,000. The budget that the city council had approved was $100,000. The additional bid alternate came in, I believe, around $25,000. That totaled $113,000 from the aviation fund, which did exceed the budgeted estimate of by $13,000. Just recently, I became aware of some other projects that the city council has approved in fiscal year '17 budget, in which there are going to be some cost savings in excess of $16,000. So the recommendation from staff is for the city council to consider authorizing the additional $13,000 from the aviation fund and CIP to fund the additional, the third item that is in this scope. And the third item in this scope is basically an overlay, if you will, of the existing terminal parking lot that serves all of the, not only the terminal tenants, but also the customers to the airline and to the restaurant. This overlay, in essence, will really extend the life of that pavement by an additional five years, and it was determined to be a worthwhile investment. Is there any questions at this time?
Any question, comments?
I have a question of Steve. Why are we redoing Mount Vernon Senator Highway again?
It's not that we're redoing, and I was, I'll re-clarify that again. We're not reconstructing the pavement. Basically, we're adding a preservation coating to the top to rejuvenate the asphalt, to give it more life to, if we, basically, the preservation process. Asphalt is a living, flexible pavement, which is designed to last 20-plus years with maintenance. If you don't maintain it, you may be reconstructing that in about 10 years. If you add the seal coating in the first three to seven years of the life of the pavement, you can extend that life even further. And then maybe instead of milling at 10 to 15 years, you can add another seal coat in another three to five years, extending the life further and further. So instead of having a reconstruction project in 20 years with maintenance, you know, when we're talking pennies versus dollars, you can extend the life of that, you know, 30 years, which is a big savings to the funding source and gets you more, better streets with fewer dollars.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman Zell.
Thank you, Mayor. So Steve, real quick to...
Yes.
Bring down what you just said.
Okay.
When it hits the paper, the neighbors say, "Why are you tearing up this brand-new street?" We're not tearing anything up.
Nope.
We're just adding life to it.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And it's, essentially, it's a painted, a sprayed-on top coat that, it's like a chip seal process, where you're just working on the top coat, but it's a, not as intensive process as a chip seal. It's more of like a slurry and a microseal, which is a...
I'll try to keep my answer real short when they call.
Sorry.
Okay.
Painted on.
Okay, thanks.
You have any questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award City Contract Number 2017-075.
Second.
You got a motion, a second vote, please?
Whoa, 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 whoa. You need to add...
Yes.
The bid alternate, the one item to the motion, before...
If that's your desire.
If that's what you want to do.
Okay, for how much?
The bid alternate is $25,000 and $78.
Including bid alternate for $25,078.
Second.
Any motion, a second vote, please?
Good call, John.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you. I wanted to see if you were awake down there.
I wasn't as awake there.
It's uniform.
Next item?
Item 3H, approval of various airport items. One, the acceptance of Federal Aviation Administration Grant Number 3-04-0030-037-2016, in the amount of $950,000 for an airport master plan, AMP, and runway incursion mitigation study, RIMS, for Ernest A. Love Field, Prescott Minissel Airport, PRC. Two, the acceptance of an Arizona Department of Transportation grant, in amount not to exceed $25,000 for the AMP and RIMS. And three, approval of a professional, professional services agreement with Delta Airport Consultants, City Contract Number 2017-017, for planning and environmental services for airport capital improvement projects. Four, approval of authorization, authorization of services, number one, under City Contract Number 2017-017, with Delta Airport Consultants, in the amount not to exceed $920,751 for accomplishment, accomplishment of the AMP, RIMS, and related work. And five, authorization of the local grant mats for the AMP and RIMS, in an amount not to exceed $25,000. FAA 95%, ADOT 2.5%, and City Airport Fund 2.5%.
Mayor and city council, that was quite a bit of action items. Just to summarize, the first item is actually to accept a $955,000 federal grant into this community for some planning of the airport and the airport area. Item two is to accept an ADOT grant of up to $25,000 for their 2.5% share. Item three is a professional services agreement. This is a five-year on-call contract with the staff-recommended professional consultant that has a national reputation for effective planning and environmental. And, and the five-year on-call contract could allow the staff to recommend to the city council for future environmental and future planning items throughout the next five-year term. Item four is to authorize the contract, the first contract with this professional service agreement, under the professional service agreement with Delta Airport Consultants. And then finally, item number five is to allow up to $25,000 of the city council-approved CIP funds from the local airport fund, in order for the, to fund that local share. So I can give you a little bit of history, if the council will indulge me. In 2008 was the last time that the city has approved a master plan at the airport. It's very common, the FAA, as far as a rule of thumb, if you will, after five to seven years of an existing plan, if there is any significant changes, then the FAA will certainly support a future master plan for the airport and the community. The, recently, the city council threw via various resolutions, specifically Resolution Number 4308, that was approved in October of 2015. It approved the terminal siting preference from the city council via resolution. Another resolution, 4265-1474, that was authorized in December of 2014. It accepted the findings from an 18-month study regarding the local airport area and the plan. The city council did accept that with the recommendations regarding the airport and economic development in the area, as well as the formation of an, of a new master plan. So, those components of, via the city council resolutions that just occurred within the past three years, will be incorporated into this future master plan. And more recently, in April of 2016, this city council did approve the submission of a grant application to the FAA for up to a million dollars, specifically for this grant. There's a lot of components in this grant, just not including the technical details in this. There is a, we call a runway incursion mitigation component, which is a brand-new system, if you will, through the FAA nationally, that they're focusing on some specific airports that could be, that could qualify under this runway incursion mitigation study. There are two airports in the southwest region, which includes parts of California, Nevada, and Arizona, that, that the FAA is really focused and dedicated for this runway incursion mitigation program. There's one small airport called Phoenix Sky Harbor, just to the south of us, and the only other one is, is Prescott, the city of Prescott. Of the 200-plus airports that could qualify for this, these are the two that the FAA has identified for the, the runway incursion mitigation. So, there's a lot of, of other technical data. We're going to get a full-blown geographic information system, program at the airport, that's going to identify every piece of pavement, every light, every sign, all of the underground environmental components. There'll be a lot of different layers that, that will be available to the airport for the long-term future, not just the life of this, of this master plan. So, the process was that, several months ago, after the city council did approve the application to the FAA, staff began the process of conducting a selection, if you will, of the professional consultants. So, there was three members of the city staff, including the city planner. There was also a member from the Embry-Riddle Department Chair, that has a history of airport planning and a lot of, of airport involvement. And then there was a member of our local stakeholders in the pilots, Prescott Area Pilots Association. So, that five-member committee reviewed three proposals, if you will, and determined that Delta Airport Consultants was the highest qualified, and recommended that, again, staff begins negotiation with that firm. After the FAA did approve the scope for that project, for this comprehensive master plan that had a lot of different components included in it, the, the staff actually reached out to another consulting firm via federal guidelines, to conduct what they call an independent fee estimate. That independent fee estimate did discover that, that through the negotiation with Delta Airport Consultants, that it was within range of an acceptable fee for the scope, and that what was identified and approved via the FAA. The, as far as the fiscal impact, again, even though the, the city council did authorize a grant of up to a million dollars, the FAA will be issuing a grant in the amount of $950,000. Again, the local share is $25,000, and the state will do a contribution of $25,000 as well. So, there are some in-kind services that will be available through this. And just one example is, the airport fund will be contributing $25,000 towards this program. However, according to this, the, the federal guidelines, the city can charge up to 5% for staff services in implementing this program. So in essence, this city could have a return of $50,000 for salaries, if you will, in reimbursement for a $25,000 investment. So, does anybody have any questions at this time?
Councilwoman Zell?
Thank you, Mayor. John, I guess, all's I need to know is, this is all in line, this plan for what we've done with the realignment, with the, with the, the, their terminal, where it's going to go, all the stuff we've been talking about for the past three years, this is going to push it forward and not backwards in any way?
Yes, correct. The FAA really condoned to have this as a planning document, not only to reflect the vision of this, of the city council via the resolutions, but also really to have a planning document to propel this, and to educate the region or the community, however the city council wants to use this tool. That, I think that this is really going to help propel us as far as our planning.
It should be an easy write, since we've been talking about it for so long, so...
Yes, councilman.
Thanks.
Mayor Potem?
Thank you. John, thank you for ushering us through this process more recently than not. Also want to acknowledge the federal and state governments for recognizing our airport and its importance and relevance to the entire region, not only for fire safety perspective, and the relevance to avionics education with Embry-Riddle, a very important university, located right here in the city of Prescott, not somewhere else, and for economic development. I mean, that airport is crucial for what happens in this part of the state. So, thanks for your assistance.
Thank you, councilmember. And, and Mayor, if I may add, in the future, the next step of this is, is the mayor could have an opportunity to assign a committee, if you will, as this airport master plan continues to develop, that could consist of those members that you had just spoke of. Councilmember is, is Amber Riddle, or the Forest Service, any of the regional people, that will definitely have their fingerprints involved in this master plan design.
Councilwoman Willcox?
I just want to say thank you. I know you put in a lot of time and effort, and the committee, and all the work your staff has done. This is great, getting a million, almost a million dollars to move forward with the master plan. It's great.
Staff deserves the credit, and thank you all for your support.
Mayor, I have one question. Is the environmental assessment done?
No, sir. As a matter of fact, the mayor just submitted to the State Transportation Board, if you will, in May, a request to include a grant for a terminal environmental assessment, which they have authorized. However, there's a small cash flow issue going on at ADOT right now. We understand. The mayor did receive a letter recently that they have dedicated grant resources towards the environmental assessment, but it has not been issued. I do anticipate that, again, through an authorization of services, number two, to Delta Airport Consultants, that shortly, once we do see that that grant commitment is underway, then we can begin that process of the terminal environmental assessment.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the various items listed in the agenda item.
Stop.
That's pretty easy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second vote, please?
Passed unanimously.
Okay, I got a couple announcements before we wrap up. We have a League of Stays and Towns Conference coming up when we have our next scheduled voting meeting, so, which I think is August 23rd. And so that's been canceled. So our next regular meeting is going to be September 13th. Also, we have an ad hoc committee tomorrow night for recovery homes, and I think it's going to have some very interesting information to put out. So, any of those that might want to hear about that, make sure you're here at 5:00. And again, like I say, I always like to try and end with a quote from our, some of our founding fathers. Thomas Jefferson said that "Strong local self-government is the keystone to preserving human freedom." Thank you for coming. Meeting adjourned.
Right on. Right on, Mayor.